Okay, this is the Operation Mutual Defense Advisory Board Special Meeting. Called for on Tuesday, December eighth, two thousand and fifteen, at two o'clock Pacific Standard Time. So, I let you guys know why I was calling this meeting in the email. It has to do with the arrest of Skyler Barbo in Washington State by federal agents. And there's a, not really a conflicting sequence of events. It seems like we're pretty solid on what happened, as far as the arrest and the raid was concerned. And now that we've got the criminal complaint and such, I guess that we're pretty solid on what the charges are. First, before we get on to that particular event, in lieu of it, and now it's thrust upon our, into our radar, I wanted to outline what had been put forth to OMA, Operation Mutual Aid, when it existed, and then the agreement that was reached by the, those who participated in the Leadership Council at Bundy Ranch. And then I'll, I want to put a motion forth. So, basically, what we said and had agreed to was that anyone who participated in an OMA action and in route or egress to or from the action would be under the protection of the members of OMA in the sense that if they were apprehended or incarcerated, that we would then, you know, barring that the immediate mission, you know, necessitated our involvement, then as soon as was possible, we would shift our sights to securing the release of that individual or those individuals. Now, at the meeting, that was expanded to include a vigilant watch over each other after the events. And now, with Skyler, there hasn't been any instance of anybody who participated out there physically of having been arrested, until now. So, what I, the motion that I'd like to put forth is that a, that similar statement of protection be drafted up, you know, in support of that idea. And if anybody has any additions or alterations or anything to that, to that motion to make it more complete and provide for its being drafted, then please offer them up.
Well, I will say that when we run into something like this, it'd be better that you draft something up and submit it, and then we've got something to talk about, but I think we should draft it up. Ryan and I talked about this extensively before we started OMD, and that that was a commitment made to the people that have been willing to stand up defending the federal government. They have stuck their neck out, and even though they came under a call from OMA, they, and were the child of that original organization, that if we are not, if we are as lax as Veterans Administration is in protecting the Vietnam and Iraq and Afghanistan veterans, we're scumbags. We have an obligation to them. Once they stand up, they put themselves at risk, and we can't ignore that. We can't provide medical for them, but we can provide all the support that we possibly can.
The only thing I want added into that is that, and as long as you are following the Constitution, which obviously this guy, in my opinion, has not violated anything by the Constitution.
As long as his, as long as his act is not unlawful.
Right, right, yep.
Well, I mean, people can say his act is unlawful because he had a ten and a half inch barrel, but it's not.
Oh, that's illegal.
Because he, he has not violated the Constitution.
Right.
Yeah, that's been made illegal, but it's not, you know, the law is the Constitution, and any law abhorrent to the Constitution is illegal.
When tyranny becomes law, rebellion, yeah, rebellion.
Even worse is he wasn't involved in Congress, and it doesn't even claim that. They just claim it under some ability to circumvent the Second Amendment.
Right, right. So, yeah, I agree a hundred percent with that statement, that we, I will include, in the, well, anyway, if I draft it up, whoever's going to draft it up, include language to that effect, that as long as they're not involved in an activity which is immoral or unconstitutional.
There you go. So, in favor of that, I say aye. I'd like to see the file wording, but in principle, aye.
Well, the motion now is to draft it.
Okay.
Yeah.
We don't have something before us. And I would also amend that to say that, once it's drafted, and Ryan, I'll work with you on drafting it, we get it out to the board and allow the board to vote by vote, by the email, rather than have a special meeting if we're satisfied with the wording.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that.
Tim, you're good, okay? Then we'll begin drafting it. As far as the issue with Skyler sits, then with, upon ratification of that document and basically the approval of the idea of it, then I'd like to discuss what a, what a possible course of action that's being, has been presented.
Well, do you want me to give a brief to everybody on what happened, since I've talked with Kerry and Alan?
Oh, yeah, yeah, please do, please do.
Okay. Kerry and Alan have a ranch. I'm not sure how far away it is from where the arrest was made, but Skyler lives on the ranch in a building. And Skyler and Alan had gone to Auburn to pick up, what they do, one of the things they do on the ranch is they get war dogs and retrain them so they're not vicious, and then give them out as service dogs or dogs to veterans. So, they recondition service dogs to make them friendly and good pets. Skyler had gone along because they were going to be handling two dogs. Skyler had gone along, or he drove, I mean, Alan drove, and Skyler rode with Alan to handle the two dogs. Alan, or Skyler had, was going because a guy named Oliver Murphy owed him some money, and Oliver told him to meet him at a truck stop. And so, they went to the truck stop, and Oliver's car was there, but Oliver was nowhere in sight. Once they got out of the car, a bunch of federal agents came up and surrounded them. And Skyler was moved one way, and Alan didn't see him again after that, and Alan was moved the other way. They searched Alan's car without permission. It's not on the warrant. Then they asked him to sign that he had given his consent, and he said, "No, he's not going to." So, I should have a copy of the document, or he said refused to sign because he didn't give his consent. Meanwhile, about the same time, simultaneously almost, at the ranch, the, a bunch of people came up. I've got the numbers, they'll be in the article, I don't recall right now. A bunch of people dressed in, kind of like the people, shooters in San Bernardino, in black uniforms came up. They had a warrant.
Jackbooted thugs.
What?
Jackbooted thugs?
Yeah. I don't know if they were jackboots, though, I think they have rubber soles, but they, I should have a copy of the warrant. She said it was not a no-knock warrant, however, they entered by opening the back door with the ram. And she doesn't, she said nobody knocked or anything, but.
Ooh, well, that's kind of a knock.
I just, just before the meeting, I got off the phone with her, and she sent me the documents, so I haven't had a chance to look at them. When I get them sorted out, I'll get them in the Dropbox.
Well, the battering ram is knocking.
Yeah, hell of a knock.
Yeah.
It is now.
Whose side are you guys on?
Now, wait until you hear the rest of it. They expended eight flashbangs in the house. Every time they entered a room, they throw a flashbang in ahead of them. It blew out windows, damaged furniture, damaged the building. They threw maybe as many as twenty outside in different areas. I guess they have some outbuildings in the house that Alan stayed in. But she was detained at gunpoint for the entire period that she was there. I mean, everything just defies what we would expect the government to do. To me, the abuses here are greater than any I've seen before. Massey, Wolf, Beecher, anything like that. This is far worse. They're just completely abusive in this one. And so, I'm trying to get the rest of the documents. I'll be getting, checking daily on Pacer. I got the two documents that are in Dropbox. I emailed them to you, by the way, Ryan.
Yep.
I'll be keeping every, everybody updated on Pacer, but this is such an abuse that it's beyond my comprehension. I mean, in one package, because of the two events, we've got completely excessive action, and there's no arrest warrant shown yet. They had a motion for detention, which, but they don't have a search warrant or even an arrest warrant, which, and they haven't logged the search warrant, so I'm getting it directly from the Yanks, Kerry and Alan. But, you know, just everything's wrong here. Massey, they had an arrest warrant based on the criminal complaint. Here, they don't. Beecher, they had an arrest warrant. And Wolf, they had an arrest warrant. Everybody else, they had an arrest warrant on, but here, they've got none, and they even got the date wrong on the arrest. It was actually done on the sixth. So, that's a nutshell on how bad this is.
Sounds like what they did to me.
What'd they do to you?
Uh, two years ago, they drove a bomb robot through my front door. No arrest warrant, but just a search warrant without an address, just a GPS grid location, and cleaned my house out of all my guns and ammo, and left my door hanging wide open. Had twenty-three FBI evidence gatherers in my house for six to eight hours. I had two of them in my truck for six hours, and never arrested, never charged. They just took everything and walked away, and I fought with them for about nine, ten weeks, sat in the Tucson FBI office every day and speed dialed them once an hour going, "Need to talk to somebody, you gotta quit doing that." After nine, ten weeks, the special agent in charge finally came out and says, "Look, if we give your shit back, will you leave us alone?" I said, "Yeah."
Well, sooner than, but it's too late.
But, uh.
Because it's gotten far.
That's a, that's, as soon as you're done with this, that's, I need to talk about something that's, could be somewhere along the same lines as this that's getting ready to happen, or it could happen, or the word is out there that it could happen.
Well, that's why.
So, the, this, and the folks that I've talked to, it's basically been agreed that this appears to be a direct, a direct aggressive action towards, towards the community as a whole. I mean, the fact that there's no legitimacy essentially to their charge, the egregious way, the very aggressive way in which they pursued the takedown and the raid at the house, and also the confidence that Skyler Barbo has amongst those of us who served at Bundy Ranch. He was brought in as a very trusted individual to be part of the personal security detail, directly in protection of the family. So, they know the stature of Skyler Barbo, and we believe that this is a, an aggressive action towards that. And it's an aggressive action towards the movement as a whole in that regard. That brings up, obviously, the possibility that it's a specific fraud in order to garner a reaction, which reaction I'm sure they know is guaranteed to come about. But as often is the case, I'm sure they believe that our reaction will be hasty and not well thought out, which you would think that Bundy Ranch would make them reconsider that notion, but surely, they want to feed into the, to the idea that some of us are hot heads and don't think through our actions. So, as far as, well, does anybody have any specific questions that we might have answers to as far, regarding that brief on what's going on?
Nope.
Well, I'm going to make some observations on, I'm going to make some observations on, well, two observations. One is Blaine Cooper, as I said, is mentioned in there, and quite often, Blaine Cooper gets people to say things, and then he posts it, that could have consequences, whether it's valid or not. And that appears to be the case here, because he's mentioned twice. And so, sensational reporters, Alex Jones got the Mayor Brown to, claim it was martial law in, oh, that town in Arizona, I can't think of it right now, right on the border. And, but it wasn't martial law, and when I talked to Brown, he said, "No, it wasn't." He said it wasn't, and I decided I'd just go along with that, because he kept pestering me. And Blaine's kind of like that, so just advice is be very careful about Blaine Cooper. They will use his.
Well, just so you know, I specifically contacted Blaine and asked him to put out a, a message of awareness about the issue with Skyler.
Well, this is, the stuff on the, goes back to many months, or November. I don't know if it was November this year or last year, let's see. But they used Blaine's videos.
Sure.
Yeah, November twenty-second of this year, they used Blaine's videos, and those are, two of the key elements in getting the criminal complaint against him. And it's just, when people, when you drop your guard and give access to somebody that's on your side, what he presents to other people might be something that you might not have presented to other people, I guess is the best way to put it.
So, what context is, are Blaine's videos linked to Skyler in this case?
I haven't read the whole thing yet, but they're linked, they're in the documents, Document One, and you can see that, they use twi, in two paragraphs, nine and ten, they address Blaine Cooper as a source. I have not read the whole thing, I just got it just before our conference call.
Gotcha, okay.
But the other one is Procedure Two. Ryan, tell, explain why you think I can't get information from Golda.
Uh, the PPN, and I've been, I've told you guys about kind of what's been going on as we are going through this Harney County deal up here. As I began to call around to contacts that I have up here in the Pacific Northwest to not only get information on what exactly is going on with Skyler, but also to fortify everyone that it is being paid attention to, and that, you know, my intention personally is to uphold the promise that was made, that anybody who's arrested, as long as they're, and it was, it's stated exactly the way you said, John, that as long as they're legal, or excuse me, lawful and moral in their actions, they'll be protected and we'll secure their release. As I, as I was talking to those people, it started to become clear that there was, the PPN was also inserting their own narrative on the other side of that, which was to put forth the notion that any action that me or the people I was in contact with would pursue an aggressive, would be aggressive. And then that, you know, trying to put the, "Everybody needs to be calm, and we need to go to the court routes on the fourteenth, which is his next hearing, and have a sit-in, basically show solidarity with them and things like that." Now, with the course of action I'll present you, that's basically the initial stage of it. So, but, point being, that they have inserted themselves here in order to head off information. They do not want the flow of information to come towards anybody that has an affiliation with me or Operation Mutual Defense. They believe, as they have stated, the same exact line that the feds have stated, which is that they believe that I want a war, and that Operation Mutual Defense wants a war. Along with that, also, we've started to see a shift from folks within the PPN making contact with us. They're becoming disenfranchised with their own entity for a lot of the reasons that I've explained, and also, they see, they've seen a couple of power struggles within their different organizations under PPN, and they're becoming pretty disgusted with it. But the main thing that they're disgusted with is their lack of a desire to action. As we've seen with the mine incidents, they had what were basically tactical camping trips and exercises and a show of force, which didn't seem to have a necessity. And it's questionable as to whether they produced the results, it was a result of that that produced the results that they've seen in those efforts. So, people are becoming disenfranchised with them, and they've made contact with me and said, whatever, whatever goes on here in Harney County, or as far as Skyler is concerned, that they'll be, they'll be responding to any calls that I put out. So, that's probably, that may be why Gary is seeing a difficulty in maintaining contact with Golda, and I would foresee that as an issue moving forward anywhere up here in the Pacific Northwest.
So, now, as far as Procedure, what I think we need to address is, are we hurting ourselves by implying prematurely our involvement in something?
Can you narrow down what it is you're talking about?
Well, you went up there and were telling people that we've got to defend him, we've made the promise at OMD, OMA, and we've got to do something about this. At that point, sometimes, there's, look at how much conflict there is in the Patriot community, i.e., you're meeting with the sheriff and with the Hammonds and all that. That you had three organizations really working against each other. That I think we need to low-key things and call an emergency meeting of the board and formulate a plan, but I don't know how I'm going to get access to information when it's being cut off because of the adverse relationship between the organization, PPN, Pacific Patriot Network, and OMD.
Sure.
So, I don't know what the suspicion is, but somehow, we've got to address that. Fortunately, Alan and Kerry believe in me, but Golda, who has more information, whether he has anything, I don't have now or not, I don't know. But my access to somebody in Seattle where the trials are is gone now, where the hearings.
Well, it makes it, it creates a more comfort for you on that level. You know, I don't, none of those things were, that I stated as far as the necessity to get, to get Skyler released were connected to OMD. In fact, I explicitly stated that nothing had been sought on the issue yet, and that that would come about. And what was stated was the agreement, you know, a lot of these people were involved in Bundy Ranch physically, and they were either a part of those leadership meetings, or they were under the authority of the people that were at those leadership meetings. So, they're very aware of the agreement that was reached, not necessarily as a result of OMA involvement, but as an agreement of the Defense Council that was gathered, so.
But as you said, they know that we're.
It's the persona of Brian Paper.
But as you said, as you told me on the phone, they know that I'm a part of OMD, and you're part of OMD.
Yep.
I'm just wondering if we might be better to have a meeting. As soon as something comes up, we call an emergency meeting, and we waive, if people aren't able to make it, we waive having a quorum, if the majority votes to proceed on something. But then, we prepare carefully worded statements rather than, and that be all that be said at this point. That we start doing this in a more professional manner in return, in regards to going public with it. Because I think, you know, OMD has been cut out of this, as far as the people, the organization up there, PPN.
Now, what, real quick, why, just because they don't like us shouldn't deter us from taking action? That's my opinion.
No, I'm just saying, saying that we ought to be very careful in what we put out at the time, a very concise statement, and that be the only statement. I don't know what's said in the private conversations, and I don't know what might be said to somebody in good faith, and they might pass it on to others where it creates a problem, and it could be even distorted in the, in the process of being passed on to someone else.
Yeah, I haven't put out any video or call yet, because I, yeah, I want it, I want there to be more facts. I'm learning a lot at this meeting alone, and, but I'm definitely going to be planning on, you know, I'm not going to be saying it on behalf of OMD, it'll be just on behalf of John Ritzheimer. This is what has been presented to me, this is the situation, and, you know, pack your bags. Just make sure you're geared for me.
That's basically where my statements have also been, is that, you know, they're coming straight from me. They're not coming from OMD. And until, until we reach a decision here on this board, I will never pursue that, that image, that.
I understand that, but as you said in the phone conversation, when I said, "Well, you know, how do they know I'm associated with you?", and you said, "They know, they've been to the OMD page, they know who the people, the board is." I mean.
Who, PP, the PPV?
If we're going to mention, if it's going to be an OMD operation, then I think that, that we need to have the board meeting first and decide exactly how we're going to present it.
Isn't that what we're doing?
Well.
Yeah.
We are now. We got the cart before the horse, though, on it.
Uh, I guess I don't understand how.
Well, because I got shut out of the communication with Golda.
Yeah, but that's just one source. We need to be having our own source of information. Just because that Patriot group doesn't like us, based off them knowing who we are and going to our website, and, I mean, that's just one source. That shouldn't, we don't rely on them.
Well, let's go to our intelligence specialist, Dennis. What do you think?
Well, the thing it comes down to is, is that we're not necessarily always going to be able to come up with a unified position that quickly. I think, though, that I agree with Gary, that we should, as soon as possible, go ahead and have a meeting, so that we can get as many people on the same theme, if you will, and the same message that we're putting out. Because that's always better than them playing us off against each other. But by the same token, if Ryan's on the ground and something's happening, or John's on the ground, something's happening to me, you know, you do what you've got to do. But I think there should be just a good faith attack to try to get a unified message out, just because I think it works for everybody. And if we can bounce a few ideas, maybe we can refine it to where we don't get caught. That's my two cents.
Right.
And that's what I'm asking for in the future, that we look, try and get a meeting as soon as possible and formulate what the position of OMD is going to be. Are we going to say it's under observation? You know, we just have to, based on the circumstances, decide and put out an official statement.
Or we just don't want to put out an official statement, because it may be counterproductive, but everybody's at least putting out the same message simultaneously.
Right.
Yeah, I guess I'm finding, I'm wondering, how does, I mean, I totally agree, that's why we're having this meeting. I guess I'm kind of wondering.
You think that's what took place?
Yeah, what is it that you're specifically looking for to, to happen or not happen?
Well, two things. Two of the stories I got, one was for he had an illegal weapon, and the other one, not, you know, not as clear as what is on account one. And the other one was that he transferred a weapon illegally, you know, the story wasn't straight. But if OMD comes out with a statement, I'll be associated with the OMD statement, and at that point, if Ryan on his own goes out and tries to motivate people, at least I can. at least I can create a distance. This is the position I'm taking with OMD. And if they've got a great-
Are you saying because we said something, because we are board members on OMD and the fact that we said something, that that kind of unofficially makes an OMD statement? And that, and are you, if that would take place?
Ryan's feeling was because of Ryan's involvement that they probably cut off communication with me. I wouldn't be surprised, I've tried Golda three times, about an hour ago was the last time. He's just not answering the phone when I call. And he was very cooperative at first, and Ryan's speculation was PPN got to him. Now, if OMD comes out with a statement, then what Ryan does is separate from the statement. Then Ryan's acting on his own, and it's very clear, and it might not shut the door to me. Because our statement, if it stands good with PPN, then they'll probably continue to communicate with me. And, you know, we've got a kind of a mixed playing field, because we've got, as happened at the Bundy Ranch, you had CSPOA wanted to be in charge, oath keepers wanted to be in charge, and, you know, that got resolved, and CSPOA left, and both keepers left because they couldn't play, be the boss. And so, there's egos involved. PPN has an ego, you know, its leadership has an ego, which Ryan explained earlier, that some of the people are beginning to question their leadership. But the problem is, the leadership's in place now, and so, we're dealing in kind of a nebulous environment where people follow their leader.
Well, I'm about to display my ego here, real quick. The only reason that you have any information is because the people that are involved contacted me to let me know that this was going on. So, if the notion that I'm going to withhold a promise that was made amongst people on the ground and not display that attitude to the people that are still involved and believe in that statement in the interest of securing some, I don't, you know, some folks within the PPN have now obviously come over to trust, put their trust in my decision-making ability as opposed to the organization that they're a part of. So, this notion that us coming out and making statements or being involved, stating a personal point of view or any of that, a hindrance of that is going, you're going to tie my hands completely, Gary, and I don't understand how you possibly think that I can be effective in the capacity that I play in this movement.
I don't see, is OMD going to follow you, or are you going to follow OMD? Let's be blunt about it.
Oh, I don't think it's like that at all, Gary. I think that he's got boots on the ground, and our reputation precedes us, you know, there's people out there, there's a lot of patriots out there that hate me. They wouldn't follow me anywhere. They don't trust my decision based off, you know, false information that's out there on me. So, but Ryan's got to be out there, he's there, he's, you know, he's doing what he can. Just because communication gets tied off, cut off based off your affiliation with us, I mean, there's nothing we can do about that.
We've chosen freely to make this affiliation, we've chosen to make this affiliation with one another. And if, you know, if John comes under fire, then quite honestly, I don't care if it has to do with OMD or not. I feel like we are coming under fire, and, you know, would respond to the heat that he's taking. So, you know, our affiliation here, we can try to keep separate our efforts when OMD does not take an official stand on something, and we decide to pursue something of our own personal volition. But inevitably, our name is tied to this organization and our affiliation with one another.
Stop right there, what you just said, whether OMD's going to follow it or not. Now, if OMD's going to follow it, is it going to follow Ryan, or is it going to follow it? And if OMD decides not to follow it, then there's no bar against Ryan following it.
Correct.
But the opinion from outside or the observation from outside quite easily could lend others to believe that it's an OMD operation and Ryan's speaking for OMD at that point.
Okay, so I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you in the sense that, okay, look, you know, John, you know, you have your things going on as far as the Islamic radicals, and as far as that stuff goes, OMD can lend its network and its assets, its ability to call forth many people if there's something to respond to in that regard, and also, as far as information sharing and publicity and such. And I have now, obviously, this effort that I'm pursuing in Harney County with other individuals and groups, which is not with OMD involvement at this point. So, I understand and I agree, for instance, that if we're going to sell ourselves completely to the notion of what Operation Mutual Defense is, then we should not pursue actions which are outside of Operation Mutual Defense agreement and support. But if that's the case, if that's the case, then we're going to have to, this effort with OMD is going to have to become a much greater part endeavor as opposed to pursuing personal avenues.
I couldn't do, we couldn't do that. I mean, that's like telling Tim, you can't do anything on the border until OMD, which OMD has already, you know, it's a sponsored event or what have you, but it's, I have to follow my heart. We all have this divine providence, like we said, like I'm trusting every single one of you and your decisions. It's unfortunate that we do have our reputations that precede us, and, but I'm trusting all of you guys that, you know, if you guys say, hey, this is a bad idea, we're not going to be able to get involved, well, if that's where my heart is still taking me, then I need to do that. I'm not going to be doing it on behalf of OMD. I haven't put anything out there on behalf of OMD, so, I mean, but I'm still going to be vocal or have an opinion.
Listen, we've got apples, oranges, and bananas in this mix. You're pursuing, bringing attention to Muslims and how bad they are for this country. You're not facing off with the government, there's no call to arms to stand up and fight for return of constitutional government, even though there may be a call to arms. So, it's not associated with OMD in that regard. What Tim's saying-
I get what you're, I understand completely what you're saying. You're saying that Ryan Payne has the ability to commit a mutiny to OMD's support or not because the people who will directly follow-
I'm looking at it more, first, I'm going to set the distinction between the three types of operations, if I might continue. Tim's going, an ongoing operation, the opposition in that case would be Mexican cartel. So, shooting against them is a whole different world. But, you know, we've got two events where we're looking at facing off against the federal government, and that's where OMD does come in by virtue of the mission statement. But if, for example, on the Hammond Ranch, if, and perhaps we should have done this, and I'm looking at trying to come up with a procedure that works best for all of us. Perhaps in the Hammond Ranch, we put, should have put out a press release saying we've looked into this, and for these reasons, OMD is not involved in this. Which doesn't say that it's not bad, we can even say how bad it is, but that the Hammond's have not sought our support. On the one with Skyler, we could put out one that says we're investigating this and would appreciate any input from anybody, and even open up the discussion board on the page for people to discuss it. But if OMD takes the position that we're investigating it, at that point, there's a separation between you and OMD. They can't tie what you say to OMD. And what I'm looking for is something that allows the intelligence gathering to function as well as possible. And by the way, all I got was a name. I pursued that name, found the guy, contacted him, through him, got in touch with the Yanks. All I had was a name, Adam Golda.
Gary, perhaps you shouldn't be doing the intel, I mean, yes, you should be doing the intelligence gathering, but it shouldn't be from anyone whose name is on that website on the board. We need to have our intelligent, our secret squirrel intelligence guys whose name is not affiliated with OMD, who can go out and get that intelligence gathering.
Well, we'll find somebody that can do that, but remember, I'm also pursuing stories like I did on Masti, on Wolf, on Beecher, on the Bundy Ranch, and other stories. I'm doing it as a reporter, and at the same time, a reporter gathers information that's necessary from an intelligence standpoint quite often. So, it's kind of a mixed bag. I'm doing it as a reporter.
So, what is it?
You don't need to be, your name, making the call, it doesn't need to be you, Gary Hunt, making that phone call. People can willfully submit, you know, information to you, but we should also have a secret squirrel crew that can get information and be pushing it to you.
If we find somebody that is able to do that, that would be fine, you know. I've listened to a lot of people do interviews on the internet, you know, and it takes more than just asking questions. It takes asking what, knowing what questions to ask and developing more questions out of the responses. And most people can't do that.
But as of right now, we don't have that, we have Ryan's boots on the ground.
So, what is it? Can you specify in brief what it is that, I mean, obviously, this is something that I've done. What is it in the future that you think that I should do or not do?
To come to the board first, once you become aware of it, you call for a board meeting, and we discuss and decide how to proceed. We might have decided to proceed the same way you have proceeded. But whenever it's a potential confrontation with government forces, I think that it needs to come to the board first and get the blessings of all of us, or for us to make a statement that will create that separation.
Okay, try to make that-
Like under investigation or something like that. I'm just asking that you come to the board first.
Before making a public stance on our own, come to the board first because the board may agree with that stance, and then it can be a stance at the board versus solo.
Right. Let the board decide, it's not going to keep you from doing what you want to do, Ryan, in any way, shape, or form, it's for the board to consider what effect it might have on OMD, and determine then whether OMD wants to jump in with both feet, just say it's under investigation, or say that we're not interested in it. But at that point, the OMD, that creates a greater separation between OMD and the individuals, whether it be John, Tim, Gary, well, not Dennis, but Ryan. That people look to OMD for OMD business and not assume OMD is a part of it, which is apparently what is, from what you told me on the phone, is apparently what probably occurred with Golda.
It may have, it may have. And that's just an analysis of the situation. Now, I would tend to agree with you, and I think I do respect that, and surely would in the future, what it is that you're saying as far as coming to the board first. But in this particular instance, and only in the interest of brevity, getting this wrapped up right here, this is that the promise to Skyler was a promise that was made by the people that participated on the ground at the Bundy Ranch and to each other. And regardless of what stance any organization decides that they will ever take on securing Skyler's release, I will not rest until I have put my full effort forth personally into securing that release. And quite honestly, nobody that ever called me was asking what OMD's position was or anything like that. They were calling me knowing what my position was. Nobody that called me asked me, Ryan, do you think we need to go get Skyler? They asked me, Ryan, when are we going to get Skyler? Because they already know the answer to that question. So, I agree with you, Gary, and you have my commitment, this board has my commitment, that any issues that arise in the future would come before the board, before I pursue them personally.
I'll agree with that as well.
And one other benefit to that is there are four other heads thinking, and we might develop an approach that would help you in reacting to people. You know, to tell them that, you know, I don't know what it would be. We could discuss now what the best course of action is going to be. We've got one now, which is to, you know, to amend it, to carry over the support for the OMA promise. And so, the next thing we have to discuss is what's the route we're taking now. And so, I think we resolve the concern that I have, and that's, as I say, is procedural, that by experience now, we've learned that it might be better to come to the board first, get all the heads together, and then proceed from that point. Now, you can talk to people, but try and minimize it. But as soon as you find out, you know, we could have called the meeting when you called me yesterday. And like I say, I think we need to be able, in those circumstances, to waive having a quorum that will notify everybody, try and give two hours' notice. And I apologize for the two emails today, that one was sent a half hour before the other, and it didn't show up, so I sent another one, and they showed up together. But we'll call for a board meeting as soon as possible, as soon as you're aware of a situation. And then, we can start looking into it, putting our heads together, deciding how to proceed, and perhaps giving you some good advice from the multiple heads in this, on how you should proceed as Ryan Payne, and what we're going to do at that point in time with OMD so people know that we're doing something. So, we put out a press release, we open up the discussion board, we've got the, the board is set up, it's there, and we start a subject on it. People can come on there and discuss it, you know, and-
Yeah, you're, okay, so let's wrap this up. We're, the, there's actually two different issues going on there. We can discuss that later. We have agreeance, then, basically, that before any types of courses of action are laid out or any type, anything of that nature, that we will discuss them with the board first. Is that essentially what we're looking for?
That's what we're looking for, and if everybody's in agreement, we'll end it on that, then.
Yeah. I'll definitely say that at this point, there's, you know, the affiliation is made. When I call and talk to somebody, if they're, they know that I'm a part of OMD, they know that you're a part of OMD, it doesn't matter if I say I'm talking on behalf of OMD or not. They're going to make that affiliation. But anyway, okay, so if we're in agreeance, then we can move on. I do have a, um, a course-
Well, let me just add what you said, but OMD will, at that point, make a statement publicly too, so that the OMD's position, if it's consistent with yours or whatever, it'll be made. And when it's in black and white, people can read it, and, oh, hey, I agree with that. And it might not, it might get away from personalities at that point, too. I mean, I've spent 22 years trying to reach people and change their thought process and, you know, what, how they're thinking on the subject. So, I think it will be beneficial in the long run. So, let's move on.
Okay, I have discussed a reasonable sequence with some other individuals, namely, some of the folks that would respond. And it has been agreed that, first off, they're willing to respond. And I think, John, you also mentioned that you guys, in the event that a response was formulated, would also be in support of that.
Yeah, it looks like I'm going to wait till that hearing on the 14th. And that's maybe selfish of me, but I do have an appointment that I need to make that I'm going to on the 14th that I have missed and lost numerous times. So, I need to make sure I'm there for that. And if I don't like the outcome of what's going to take place at this court hearing, then we will be on our way out.
Well, I'll discuss what we've conversed about, and I think you'll find that it fits, uh, just fine-
Let me add one thing that I failed to mention. According to Kerry Yank, Skyler has been moved to a federal facility. I'm going to try and follow that up. I got off the phone with her about five minutes before the conference call. I'm going to call the jail and see if, I need to submit a request to interview- I'm going to call the jail and, uh, see if, um, I need to submit a request to interview him there, which, uh, and they'll say, well, he's not here and then I'll see if I can find out where he is.
As far as last I heard, he was in King, King Correctional Facility outside of Seattle?
Yes, where he was and that's where I'm going to call.
Okay.
See if he is still there because, uh, Kerry Yank believes that he's been moved.
So I have some, some folks, uh, who, who we're going to be personally meeting with, uh, on the ground, um, as far as, uh, uh, coming to, coming up with, uh, the particulars of, uh, of a plan. But the, the basic outline of it at this point, uh, looks like, um, on the fourteenth, there would be, there, there will be some people present in that courtroom, uh, that will be able to, to show solidarity with, uh, with Skyler and let him know specifically to, to relay the message through eye contact or whatever, whatever body language they can possibly let him, let him know. Apparently his demeanor changed, you know, when, when they, he saw that there were people there to support him, so, uh, he, he was kind of lowly, um, uh, and then he, uh, he noticed that, you know, he, he became more livid, uh, by, by that show. So on the fourteenth, um, if I can't be there myself, I am, I am planning on being there at this time, but I, I'm not positive that that's going to happen. Uh, then, uh, there will be people for sure there to let him know that we haven't forgotten him and that we will not forget him. Um, as far as, uh, the, the course of action moving forward, um, there, one, one difficulty in this is assembly and, uh, and putting together a plan. Um, the, the idea that, that has come forth and that I'd like to present to you guys for, uh, for your own, uh, approval and then involvement and dissemination is, uh, a, a two-pronged approach, a division of, of efforts. Uh, one being, um, a, a, a protest effort, a, a movement of the people, uh, which shows their displeasure with what's going on and the other being the actual effort, uh, to secure his release. Um, that actual effort to secure his release, uh, I, I'm going to leave in the dark at the moment until, uh, uh, and then allow for, uh, courses of action to be drawn. What's that?
Leave that in, until as late as possible.
Yeah, uh, and then also so that, you know, some courses of action can be developed by, uh, by you guys, um, and, and what you think that should look like and, and if we can get them transmitted, uh, in a manner that doesn't reveal them. Otherwise, the people will be on the ground here. Um, the, the idea is that a, a call is going to be going out at some point, uh, here shortly within, and what I mean by shortly is probably within the next couple of weeks, um, to, to assemble, uh, in this area where I'm at. And that, that is going to bring forth a lot of the, the resources that would be necessary in order to, uh, request Skyler's release. And, uh, at that point, the, uh, the more intricate plans for, for the, uh, for the other side can be, can come together. And, uh, so that, that seems to be, uh, the best avenue that we've come up with so far, which is basically to, to stay hands off, let Skyler know that we are here and that we haven't forgotten about him, uh, by showing up, uh, and, and seeing him and letting him see us. And then, uh, uh, basically using the muster, um, that is probably going to be coming about here for this effort, uh, in order to, uh, draw the manpower and the support from, uh, to secure him.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds like a good start. Of course, the, the key elements are going to be where is he physically at and any of the movements?
Yeah, and we, we do have, uh, some other folks who are outside of the, the PPN network, uh, that, that are in tune with that information and, uh, and getting us, you know, things like schematics and, and, you know, whatever we need in order to develop the, the, uh, the direct course of action. Uh, so that, that stuff's in, in its movements. Um, I guess, and, and quite honestly, I don't necessarily know what we would do in, in that case. I guess the, that, uh, I, I, I'm not sure if that looks like a, a public statement saying that Skyler is, uh, I, I don't necessarily know how to go about it, uh, you know, and I'm, I'm wanting definitely hear what you guys' ideas are. Is, is this something that we essentially have agreed on that, that, uh, when, when that effort is to begin to take place, that we will, uh, assist by calling forth whatever networks it is that we have to assist in that effort and, and keeping it in the, uh, under wraps until that point? Or should, uh, should we put out a public statement with, uh, as far as OMD's stance on it, that Skyler, uh, you know, it does, it is under a protected status via that agreement and that obligation that we feel, uh, you know, in support of one another and, and other patriots? Or what, I, I guess, what are you guys' ideas on, on how we proceed forward as far as our decision here?
I think the plan has to be something that's completely secret. You and the people up there, uh, need to, you know, prepare your approach. Uh, did a, an assembly, uh, basically saying that, that something is to be done to assemble here at this time, uh, would be the extent of anything that goes out. Now, I'm going to go back to something that's happened in Waco. Uh, I had been talking with people in Waco before I went there and we developed a plan. They sent me a map of the area and we developed a plan where, uh, this one organization, uh, Council on Domestic Relations, a takeoff on CD, uh, Council on Foreign Relations, had promised that they would have four thousand people down there. Uh, it was more like fourteen people that they had down there and, and six of us was a Waco team. But we had, uh, I had prepared, well, in Florida, a plan on, uh, approaching it and had made copies and those copies were handed out at the last minute, after the assembly took place on what people were going to do. They, there's no way you can keep it secret from the government, but if you keep it in your pocket until the last moment, they don't have time to respond. That was the idea there. We just didn't have enough people.
So one of the things in, in line with this is that up here, as far as the Harney County effort, uh, our public meeting on this Saturday, um, I'm going to give, uh, the presentation on Committee of Safety. And one of the, the objectives of that public meeting is to, uh, get the seats for that Committee of Safety established. Now, that, that Committee of Safety will then, um, you know, have the authority first off to, to call forth the, uh, evidentiary review board and also to call forth for the, uh, uh, a sanctuary to be provided for the Hammonds while that evidentiary review board is taking place. And all of this initiated by the local populace, by the people. So once that, uh, once the, that Committee of Safety comes together and, and decides what call to issue, um, I believe that that would satisfy the criteria, uh, that we've set forth in, in order to support this effort up here. Is there any disagreement with that?
No, there's not. Uh, what I'm suggesting is you hold, you, like, what I said earlier on this one, prepare a motion for this to work with. Have that in hand. Once the councils are formed, give them the motion that you think is there, let them work it up to their satisfaction and then we've got the piece of paper rather than getting what you intend in the motion out before, uh, well before the meeting where the, the government could have people in there arguing against it rather than having them, having to spontaneously argue.
Right, right. Basically, the idea of the meeting is to present them with all of the information and then, and, and then induce the idea of forming that, that body, uh, at that meeting because of the, the gathering of the people. So, yeah, no, I, I agree.
But then you need to have in hand what you want to, want to propose as their motion be, their first order of business.
Right. Uh, and then I, you know, that'll obviously, uh, conjure forth the, the necessary resources in order to, uh, to put together a more cohesive plan, uh, as far as, uh, our friend up there in Washington.
Same thing there, that, uh, that, uh, at assembly, that only the assembly be announced and then the, 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 the tactics be given at the last minute before implementation, just immediately before implementation. Give them as little time. They, uh, the ATF got ahold of one of the maps, uh, when the, the, all fourteen people were there. And you can tell when, when we're BTA, uh, BT, BATF because they were going, telling people, you'll get shot if you do this. Well, I don't think we have this concern this time. People, these people are, are, aren't demonstrators, they're militia. They were, you, uh, you know, that were on our side, so. But, um, it gave them so little time that the only thing they could do is try and instill fear in people, uh, because they didn't know what the plan was, just that there was a plan to meet. And, uh, I think that'll work ideally in Seattle or wherever that happens to be.
Right, right. Um, and then, uh, in, in order to, uh, you know, go any further with what any of the plans or intents are up here, uh, I can't do that over, over this line of communication, so. Um, but as I said, it, we, we basically do have, uh, what looks like enough support within the local populace that, that moving forward, um, it appears as if it's feasible anyway.
Well, I think up there in your circumstance, you need to find some people that you trust absolutely, make a little group and, and close the door once it's formed, you know, like the security team. You're aware of that concept, I know. You create a security team up there to do all the planning and we don't even need to know what it is. I mean, you can tell us, uh, the same time you stand, handed out to the people assembled there.
Right.
That there's no, even though we've got a structure that allows for certain planning in this instance, uh, I, I don't know that, and maybe we need to look in the future at, uh, a method of, uh, secure communication. You know, we can talk about what I call dual encryption where you, uh, encrypt something by hand first and then type it into PGP. That way, if they get through PGP somehow, they get garbage. And then the person on the other side has, um, the de, uh, does the decoding, uh, the, the, the decryption based upon the code that we've all been provided by mail perhaps.
There, there is a method, uh, for this and, uh, and I can, uh, talk to you about it, each, each of you individually on, on how to go about that. Um, so at, at this point then, would we say? Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, I interrupted you, Dennis. Can you repeat that?
No, I'm saying, uh, if you go ahead and do that, if not for this one, for the next ones, at least then we can perhaps try to help you somewhat. And I agree with Gary's concept that when you hand it out and you send it to us because I don't have as big a network as any of you guys have and I'm not going to show off my arrogance, but at least I can send it out to some folks so we can help shape the messages that's coming out and what you want to have put out at that time, if that makes sense.
And OMD's role in, in mustering the forces as well, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we can have a public statement at that time. And that, uh, could be incentive for other people perhaps to, as happened on, what was it, Saturday, when everybody came up from Las Vegas and down from wherever they came down from, at Bundy.
Right. Uh, so then, do you think that, uh, that there should be any public statement made, uh, about Skyler a- as far as his situation now?
Well, I think we need, I was thinking about that. We've got to get the motion and we'll, uh, uh, Ryan, I'll work with you on the motion. I need you to write up as best you recall, uh, what the promise was. We'll formulate it into a motion for OMD board to adopt and at the same time, I will propose a press release, uh, that'll go out along with the motion and if, uh, we are, get, get eyes on the motion and eyes on the press release, we put the press release out at that point in time, uh, being our position on the Skyler ma- uh, matter.
Gotcha, I get, I get what you're saying, yeah. But so the, the motion, um, the statement of, of intent goes out as far as OMD, uh, support and, and, uh, and our stance on patriots who are involved in operations and, and, uh, at, at any point in time. And then, along with that, s- uh, side by side to it essentially, uh, will be a, a statement of incorporating, uh, Skyler into that, that statement.
Well, I don't know if the, I don't know if the entire motion would be incorporated, but, uh, it would be that the OMD board has adopted a pro- a commitment made under the OMA during the Bundy Ranch affair, uh, regarding, uh, any effort of the government to, uh, by, uh, unlawful means, uh, you know, taking out somebody that was involved in the Bundy Ranch, uh, and, uh, OMD has, has, uh, adopted that promise and taken it as their own. And in that light, uh, we stand fully behind this. I don't know what all will say yet. I've still got to put this together, but, uh, you know, we'll wo- work that as quickly as possible and then we can, uh, you know, if anybody has any comments on the press release, something that shouldn't be excluded or anything, they can respond accordingly. But, uh, you know, I just got a, a very vague idea of how to do it at this, uh, point, but I, I'll develop something and then we'll just see if that's satisfactory and we'll put it out. I don't think we have to put the entire wording of the motion except by reference that we adopted it. Now, we can post it on the page, uh, uh, too, you know, along with the, the mission statement.
Right.
I don't see, but the, the, the exact wording has to be cluttered in, in the press release.
Okay. Then, uh, I guess, does, uh, does anybody have anything to, to add to this, uh, to this issue, uh, questions or concerns or?
So I'm, just to be clear as well, I'm free and at liberty to do my own type of rallying up, uh, the troops, so to say. Not, 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 it, this is not an official call to arms yet or anything like that, but basically I'm allowed to put it out there, uh, just get your gear ready and again, just break light for the situation.
I think the best way, you know, and, and the way I've been, uh, basically talking to people is the same conversation we had, John, that, that, uh, you know, at this point, we, we will, we do not forget Skyler, we, we, uh, he is, you know, I, under, under protection and then it'll, OMD will, will incorporate itself into that, uh, and that we be pre- prepared when, when it, when a, uh, a movement is made.
Well, let, yeah, and look, uh, in, in that line, should I in the press release point out that there will be a gathering, uh, in Seattle or whatever the appropriate location is on, uh, Wednesday hearing for, December fourteenth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we, uh.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea to at least, uh, to put out there, you know, to, to go there and, and so.
If you're in that area, they'll get there.
Put in for vacation time or whatever they have to do. Okay, so I'll, I'll include the date, there's, uh, that will, there will be a gathering in Seattle or at whatever, uh, you know, whatever location, uh, you'll be notified by that time, before that time.
Yeah, and, and then explain specifically because people know what OMD exists for, uh, that it is, i- i- its intention is to show solidarity with Skyler specifically, not, not any other thing.
Uh, uphold our obligation to those that are willing to face off with the government. Something along that line. Right? So we'll work that wording out. But I'm, I'm fully behind this, especially after the conversations I've had with, uh, the Yanks and, and Golda, uh, before.
Yeah, and John, I, I would just look at, you know, depending on what your feeling is on the, on the deal up here, I think you're, uh, just broke from, uh, my personal, um, take on, on your position on things, uh, you know, sometime, and, and I do understand that we're, we're talking about over the holiday season, right? Uh, and which makes all the more poignant our, uh, uh, what, what our intentions are, uh, that, that you talk to some people about that, you know, let them know. I, I've talked to quite a few people and. I- I've talked to quite a few people and they're- they're aware that, uh, within the next couple of weeks, there may be a call for movement.
Yeah, yeah, war- war never comes at a convenient time. It's- it's a- it's sad reality and it just is what it is. But it never comes at a convenient time.
John quote Parker, Captain Parker.
He said that?
What did he say? No, he said, "If there's to be a war, let it begin here."
Yeah, and, uh, you know, Washington crossed- Wash- Washington crossed the Delaware, uh, on- on Christmas Day, right?
Yeah.
So, anyway, yeah, that- so that's just the basic gist of it, John, uh, if, uh, you know, and- and any of you guys, i- if you would, uh, let them know that they're just pending, uh, how- what their interpretation is of what's going on here and- and that, uh, there- there may be a- a call for movement and- and I think everybody's pretty much got their bags packed and are ready to move anyway, so...
Well, I'm gonna try and get my story written as quickly as possible too, and that can go out of- of- at the same time. It'll be from outpost to freedom, not OMD, but it'll be going out too, which will explain the circumstances and the accusation and, uh, the search and- and all that shit that's gone down already. And perhaps that they've secreted hi- him away to, uh, they may be de-slinging him, who knows? We'll have to find out if he's still at King County or not.
Shit, anybody else that would have been- any average Joe that would have been arrested too, they would have been able to make bail. This is bullshit. About flat out holding this guy.
Yeah, just so- just so you're aware, we're- we are gonna be (cough) the- the eff- you know, the effort up here is- is looking like the possibility of being a- an extended effort, just so you can take that into account for your preparations.
Got that, John?
It's gonna be an extended effort?
It may be.
It has the possibility of-
What do you mean by that? Like, they're gonna be going after more?
Well, let's just think about it.
Yes, these conversations have to, uh, terminate at one point and that point has been reached, I think, on that discussion.
Yep.
Uh, I- I'm sure you, uh, i- i- if you have an idea on- on the dual encryption, Ryan, uh, or I have one, um, I think we need to get that out as quickly as possible.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree. And, uh, and barring that- that you have any time or- or, uh, uh, the- the financial ability to, uh, to get a flight up here, John, uh, if you have that ability, then I- I, you know, it- I would implore you to do so, but, um-
Uh, I got too much- too much gear that I'm bringing up. I'll be coming up in my truck. I'm not- I'm not flying nowhere. I got too much, uh, stuff to bring.
Well, no, I mean- I mean for- so that you, uh, there was a clear communication between you and the people who- who are- are within your network, uh, of response? If- if we- if you felt the necessity to have a- a- a face-to-face conversation so that you were more clear in what it was that was going on. Uh, other than that, um, I do have, uh, a pretty good means for communicating, um, securely. And, uh, I'll- I'll start working on that here pretty quick.
Well, there's one other possibility. I'm kind of halfway between you two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Consider what we're- we're gonna do.
Uh, that- that's one of my stops. That's where I'll stop for a, uh, a rest stop. (laugh) So, I'll get brought up to speed when I need to get brought up to speed.
And then if- if, Brian, can, uh, are you going up, uh, for the long term when you go up? Are you going up just to get, uh, background and get involved in planning?
Hey, I'm not- I'm not going up for (laugh)- if I'm making a drive like that, it's gonna be- it's- it's, that, like I said. I- I got my meeting on the fourteenth and then I'm making the drive up there for the- the duration. Do what I gotta do.
Very good. That's, uh, that's all we need on that, I'm- I'm sure. Uh, if- and I guess we have agreement then. So, now, uh, a- as long as we have agreement from everybody on this, we're going- I'm going to, uh, write up what- what the motion was, the specifics of the motion, uh, to adopt the- the, uh, OMA promise and the, uh, Defense Council leadership promise from the Bundy Ranch. And Gary is going to, uh, formulate a press release, um, about Skylar, uh, in- or excuse me, a press release about that motion. Uh, and then, uh, now, in that press release, are you including anything about Skylar or- or are we not?
No, uh, it's strictly gonna be OMD's taking a position, uh, fully in support of Skylar, uh, of Bar- uh, Barvo.
Okay.
I- I don't think we need to go on, uh, at this point, I think we just need to make our position clear, where we stand.
Okay.
We're a hundred percent behind him. Um, I've got to put the story together. I've got to go back through two hours of interview and- and everything to- to finish the story. Uh, I- I've- I'll finish the criminal complaint. In fact, I just sold the print, but I forgot to turn the printer on. And I might include something a- along that line. If- if all their allegations are based on photographic evidence, for example, uh, how do they know it wasn't a toy gun? Um, you know?
Right.
But I d- I've gotta read the complaint before I do that. Uh, so I- but-
Okay.
It'll go out for approval of the board, both the, uh-
So, those are the- those are the two things that are- that are- that are coming out of this meeting, basically. Is there any objections to that?
No objections, but I'd like to add one.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add that we need to get the secure comms up and I don't know if you have any time tomorrow, but I can give you most of tomorrow if you wanna try- start setting it up and prototyping it.
Um, what it- this is, uh, the one that I'm speaking of is- is a manner of communicating with, uh, uh, digital bursts. So, it's, uh, it's not a vocal communication, um, and it- and it'll be pretty quick, quite honestly. It'll be you download, uh, a deal and- and you've got it.
Okay, but I guess the point is, if we wanna- if you've got some time tomorrow, we can go ahead and get it worked out and then do it with the others and then we can start helping you maybe.
Yeah, I've got a- in fact, I'm gonna be on- on an extended drive here for the rest of the day and- and tonight. So, I will, uh, um, I'll get in contact with you here in a little while then, Dennis, and, uh, and bring you up to speed on that.
Okay, that'll be great. Uh, about how long do you think, just so I can, uh, tell the wife and make sure I get the time available? Half hour?
Uh, no, it's gonna be- give me a couple hours. I gotta- I have a- a few things to do, um, and then I gotta get on the road, um...
Okay.
Yeah, gi- give me, uh, give me two hours. So, let's say it's, uh, three thirty, four thirty, five thirty, so five thirty, eight thirty, your time.
Eight thirty, my time works. Okay, 'cause at least that one will be participate, 'cause if I am gonna come out there, I- I can't do it before the first of the year, but, uh, just so at least I can help some.
Well, that- that might be exactly when you wanna be here, uh...
Yeah, it might be, but, uh, you know, gotta do what we can do in the meantime.
Right, right. All right, well, if, uh, if that's it, then, uh, we'll- I'll call to adjourn the meeting.
I- I got one thing.
Yes, sir.
I'm debating whether to step aside for a little bit because there's some shit happening. Uh, it kinda folds in with all this stuff, uh, because the amount of media that I am bringing to the border right now and, uh, there's a lot of pissed off, uh, people. I've heard through various sources that, uh, the FBI is, uh, looking for a reason to take Arizona and Puerto Rico down. Uh, by stepping aside, uh, if any of the- I'm gonna go up there and- to their office. I'm going to their office. I'm going to the DEA, 'cause the DEA says I'm fucking up some of their shit down here. And my thing is, you wanna play secret squirrel and what- not let me know what's going on, then I live here and I'm doing what I'm supposed to do. But if I step on the wrong toes, (cough) so, I gotta set up a meeting with FBI, set up a meeting with DEA and with Border Patrol because there's another group that comes out this way. And, uh, I've been talking to them and one of the person was talking to them. And this group's out of New Mexico and they got a phone call from the FBI saying, "Stay away from there." And so, uh...
Now, are you concerned, Tim, with, uh, with- with your involvement-
I'm not- I'm not-
-expecting OMD, or are you concerned with OMD's-
Well, I might- no, well, although if they ask me any questions and I don't know anything, then I can't tell them anything. And, I mean, regardless, if I doubt, I would tell them anything anyway. But the less I know about what's getting- could happen, because I'm pretty sure they know that I'm tied in with you guys because they listen and look at us more than they do Muslims or anybody else. And, uh, so, I don't know. I- and that's why I'm bringing it up. I'm debating whether to step aside for a while until I can get to the bottom of this mess and try to figure out. Because, like I say, I ain't got nothing to hide. I'm not doing anything wrong, but they are who they are. And eventually, if I don't go to them, they're gonna come to me. And if they come to me again, it could turn out to be another, uh, situation.
My op- my opinion on- on that is that, uh, I- I assume that every conversation that we've had here is as if we are having this conversation in a- in a FBI field office with agents sitting around us. So, I have no, uh, no qualms with any- you- you know, I won't- I won't put out any information here that is going to compromise, uh, a- any- any movement forward.
Okay, well, I'm not- that's why I'm bringing it up, to get everybody's input.
I've talked to-
Uh, my- my- my take on it is, Tim, follow your heart. Uh, also, I mean, it was presented in the beginning of this to me when I was coming into this, when you, uh, that I don't need- you- you gotta remember, we're supposed to be the acting generals. We don't need to be the- the actual boots on the ground. We just take a position as OMD. So, I, you know, we need to reiterate that we don't- we're not expecting any of us to go to any of these situations, you know, you know, try- ge- getting ready to take us away or so. But it- it-
No, I'm not worried about it.
Any bit that you can- any- any bit that you can still contribute to OMD is gonna be greatly appreciated. And it, you know, as long as you're-
Yeah, I've- well-
-still with us and you're not against us, then we're good.
Yeah, don't fear protect- uh, don't think you have to protect us. We're here to protect you, okay?
Okay. All right, well, that's why I was bringing it up. I- I just have to figure out where these rumors are coming from, but they're also coming from, um, people I, uh, trust in Border Patrol.
Well, let me- let me, uh, jump in here. I- I have, uh, talked to John and, uh, Tim a- about this and one other person, Louis Arthur. It was a concern that was brought to my attention. And, uh, that is about a- a- alleged patriot by the name of Melvin Lee. And, um, Phoenix is a hotbed and with what you just said, I'm even more concerned with what I said the other day. As- as nice as he is, uh, giving- coming up with money and everything else, uh, the guy's been broke many times when it's convenient to be broke, uh, that Melvin Lee moved from Arkansas to Phoenix, uh, a few months ago, I guess, and, uh...
Yeah, he- he moved out here to (cough)- he moved out here to help his wi- wife take care of, uh, her mother. And, uh, he's lifelong in the oil industry. He's- makes a hell of a living doing that. That's where he gets his money from. Uh, I trust Melvin myself. I'm seeing, uh, where I think this started from. It was on Facebook, some-
Facebook. I'll tell you- I'll tell you first and I'll explain it if you'd like to hear. I didn't-
Sure.
Didn't mean to interrupt you, but, uh, uh-
But-
Kevin Massey has known Melvin Lee. Melvin Lee's been down at, uh, Camp Lone Star. Now, the government knows about, uh, uh, Casey's and my, uh, conversation. Uh, I don't want my source to go out beyond this conversation. But, uh, he had had, uh, questions about Melvin back when he first got busted. Melvin called him, uh, when he was at home, when he was out on bail, called him and asked questions that he shouldn't be asking. Um, Melvin, uh, turned against me because of my support, uh, over Tim McVeigh, which is a- a good government position. But then he retracted that later when he got in a feud with Kevin over- on the phone over, uh, not supporting a patriot like McVeigh. You know, there's a question in people's minds whether he's a patriot or not, but I'm- I'm fixed in mind. I believe he was. Uh, but, um, when he was questioned on it, then Melvin contacted me on Facebook and apologized. Uh, if he didn't, you know, he wouldn't be able to talk to Kevin. But all the way along, he's been talking to Massey, uh, asking questions about, uh, were they his guns and- and, uh, things that had made Kevin suspicious. And even more recently, uh, Kevin was very much concerned and, uh, called me specifically to tell me that he had concerns about Melvin Lee. Um-
Okay.
So, you know, if a guy, uh, William Wolfe met a guy that, uh, would get him a shotgun and he had faith in the guy, and William Wolfe's gonna be in prison for a few years now, uh...
Hey, Gary, Gary, can you turn off the- I think the meeting's essentially adjourned or- or, uh-
I think I turned it off, didn't I? I thought I did. Let me see. Uh, yeah, I'd put, uh, damn, let me go.
Hello?
Uh, I'm trying to find my way around this damn thing. Oh, shit, I thought I-